Switching to my better camera. Alright, I got you both in the frame.
Okay. I'm calling to order uh the ARV meeting of Wednesday. Saturday, September 7th, 2023. We do not have a forum, so this will be a seven round and then how we vote. Once we have a forum, we can go ahead and vote on it next. We are going to skip through the agenda and go to 5A about um the perspective of the tourist lodgings uh from the public street. And whether or not the video shows in uh this property is within the ARV.
Let me pull it up, I have it up, but I switched. So give me a moment, maybe Josh, if you wanted to discuss a little bit about what you saw and what the crew saw in regards to it would we were kind of trying to see what the line of sight was from the road for uh tax path 36A, 330, you know, just that COA up in law cabins.
Uh so essentially uh in our service when uh you just through that area, you cannot see the property uh from any line of sight on Route 6. Starting from this located hour, there's no angle that you can see over brush, not through these back kind of thing. So here you're not able to see anything over where to brush it now, up right here. So try to get it so you're able to see the very tip of a home that is that is just below where the homes will sit, which is a little bit over two year long.
Uh ladder.
Uh so let's say it's not that ladder area, it's still a little bit like the front of that tree is. It's but then you'll be able to see uh so around the top of that's video problem.
That's video problem.
So essentially the only place on streets that you're able to visibly see anything, I'm just gonna run about 10 seconds. Um uh honestly, that's too much anyway, also it's about five seconds of passing uh coming down the hill. You know, I'd say probably fifty to a hundred yards, uh distance between you and that location.
Okay.
Um and so then is there another one?
Mm-hmm.
Probably the third one. The third one should show the back ones, because that was a ultimate. So right here is where you start having visibility. Um so that red truck and then as you get down, you can no longer see it starting at Old Poplar.
Right.
Yeah.
And where does our, where does the um the historic district start on?
That is for well on regular on Poplar, because Old Poplar is you know, yeah, so on Poplar that yeah question. Oh, no way. You know.
Yeah.
I might have it in here. Well, unless they, I mean, I think something that we did was was mix the maps in these.
Yeah.
And I
map here. But it's really kind of quicker.
Um okay, yeah, so this work over one.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be
right, um yeah, so I'm gonna say
so it's it's within the store that is right here.
Right. But here is my question.
Is the sun.
Like as it's driving down here is is where I know I'm getting a bit tricky, but I feel like
That's the important question.
Yeah, like where where do you see it? Is that outside of the store?
Right, so what we need to know is if if the overlay district goes past the entrance to Old Poplar Spring. Because if it does, you have about three thirty foot window for visibility. Um well, really, it's probably about twenty feet past Poplar Spring or Poplar before you can see where it is set its speed at low, because uh we have a simple chart up, so that you can see where
Right, and so when you're when when someone is driving down Poplar Spring Road. Was Kevin seen it, was he on the truck?
So Kevin had a vision chart and then you were standing on top of it.
And we can't see him.
Um in the video piece like that.
You could sleep in that coming down the road.
You can.
Yeah.
Um so
I've been following it.
Uh you can see, yeah, so that's right at the house, but then
Okay.
right here is where you lose sight and that's, you know, uh maybe a little more than twenty feet. Um because you lose sight right around there and um oh, to be a plane from the shore and to have a lot of maps and this, you know, I would impose well
How here in this situation, can can we can we make a decision if we feel if those not within the store for you? Or does that need a vote?
I think the most important is that approval or uh is the vote on the certificate of appropriateness, because I think we're right now just discussing and trying to put facts together.
Right.
I wouldn't vote on anything.
Okay.
You don't have a forum, you can't vote.
Right.
Which is a little bit frustrating for that can for those participating.
Yeah.
But uh I think essentially we can use it as a work session in some way and just for you know, for transparency, we talked about it, but we can't do anything by it. And I would definitely not advise, like, we just don't have a forum.
Right.
That's uh we can talk about it and kind of figure out some stuff that might be useful for uh other commissioners, so we don't, you know, we move the problem forward.
Yeah.
Which is essentially what we're doing here.
Right.
If the maps are so greedy, um what I can try to do is work with Lincoln, who's been looking really closely at our boundary lines in Lubana.
Okay. And I have a decent idea from what was shared today on where seven point where it kind of like where you can't see anymore, and that should be easy enough for me to figure out exactly. I think I learned something between uh Jack Maxwell teaching me how to get the exact spot and overlaying it with our district, so
Yes.
of all the tiered stats, I would think I can get a decent answer on that.
Um GAF web is on the, oh, it's just
Uh Lubana has their own.
They do, okay, that's not what the
Yeah, I was on it right now and I can't figure out exactly without um having some way of definitely plotting that.
Right.
You know, I've done it with Jack before.
Yeah, okay.
And that should be an easy way, I just need to know where that is, where you're standing right there.
Right.
And then that will just
Sorry, I wanted to know the office, I know we have a big
Uh can I can I ask, I think we asked this the last time, what is your timeline for this?
I mean I mean, I I can well, 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 I I used to think that, but quite frankly, I mean, as as I go through this process, I'm like
you have a fifty million dollar project up there and everybody goes up and roar. And here I come up with something where I'm trying to come up with, I was running the numbers, and it was like a third of what a fifty million dollar project could have been, you know, and to see that I don't know, a little bit disheartened frankly, so I mean, I I mean, it can wait, but I mean, I mean, it's i- i- if it was important enough for people to be
Right.
then they would be here.
Yeah.
And and that's the part where I have a little bit of problem listening to people that don't, you know, just show up to, I I don't know, I would just be unfair. I mean, you know, if if you want to be able to have a say, you need to go, so I mean, to answer your question, I mean, I mean, I would have a choice, but we, I mean, it's
Right. And and tell me, did the, did the council um did they have any opinions about you from the bridge?
Well, I mean, I I just brought it up because you're going to see it. And and that's the whole point of why I'm trying to do it, is because you can see the water and you can see, and it's hard to have a view and not see it from the other side, so
So. Here not able to see the over. Where to project now. Ah right here. So try to get it so you're able to see the very tip of. A home that is that is just below where the homes will sit, which is a little bit over two year.
Latter end.
And so let's say it's not that latter yeah, it's still a little bit like. Right where that tree is it's.
Okay.
But then you'll be able to see um uh so around the top of.
That's good your problem.
So essentially, the only place on streets that you're able to visibly see anything I'm sorry about. Ten seconds um uh honestly, that's too much any uh also it's about. Five seconds uh the passing uh coming down the hill, you know, I'd say probably. Fifty to a hundred yards uh distance between you and that location.
Okay.
And so then is there another one?
Probably the third one.
The third one should show the back ones because that was a. So right here is where you start having visibility um so that red truck and then. As you get down, you can no longer see it uh starting at Old Poplar.
Right. And where does our where is the um? Uh the uh historic district start on.
That is for well on regular on Poplar because Old Poplar is. So on Toplar that yeah question oh no wait. Well, unless they I mean I think something that we did which was. Mix the maps in the days and I.
Maps here. But it's really kind of quicker.
Um okay, yeah, so this work over line.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be.
Right um yeah, it's.
So it's. It's within the store that is right here.
But here is my question.
Is the sun.
Like as he's driving down here is is where I know I'm getting dizzy, but I feel like.
That's the important question.
Yeah, like where where do you see it is that outside?
Right, so what we need to know is if. If the overlay district goes past the entrance to Old Poplar Spring. Because if it does, you have about three. A thirty foot window for visibility um well, really. It's probably about twenty feet past Poplar Spring or Poplar. Before we can see where it is set its speed at low because. Uh we have a chart up so that you can see where.
Right, and so when you're when. When someone is driving down Poplar Spring Road. Was Kevin. Seen it was he on the truck?
So Kevin had a picture card and then you were standing on top of.
And we can't see him.
Um in the video piece like that.
You could leave us that coming coming down the road.
You can.
Yeah, um so. Uh you can see yeah, so that's right at the house, but then.
Okay.
Right here is where you lose sight and that's you know uh maybe a little more than one feet um. Because you lose sight right around there and. Um. Oh, to be a plane from the shirt and have a lot maps and.
How here in this situation can can we? Can we make a decision? If we feel is those not within the store for you or does that need a vote?
I think the most important is that approval or. Is the vote on the certificate of appropriateness because I think we're right now just discussing and trying to put facts together.
Right.
I wouldn't vote on anything.
Okay.
You don't have a forum, you can't vote.
Right.
Which is a little bit frustrating for that can for those participating.
Yeah.
But uh I think essentially we can use as a work session in some way and just for. You know, for transparency, we talk about it, but we can't do anything by me. And I would definitely not advise like we just don't have a forum.
Right.
That's uh we can talk about it and kind of figure out some stuff that might be useful for. Uh other commissioners, so we don't, you know, we move the problem forward.
Yeah.
Which is essentially what we're doing here.
Right.
If the maps are so greedy, um what I can try to do is work with Lincoln. Who's been looking really closely at our boundary lines in Louisiana. And I have a decent idea from what was shared today on where seven point where it kind of like. We can't see anymore and that should be easy enough for me to figure out exactly. I think I learned something between. Uh Jack Maxwell teaching me how to get the exact spot and overlaying it with our district, so.
Yes.
Of all the people in the staff, I think I can get a decent answer on that.
Um G I F web is on the oh, it's just.
Uh Louisiana has their own.
They do, okay, that's not.
I was on it right now and I can't figure out exactly without um having some way of definitely applying.
Right.
You know, I've done it with Jack before.
Yeah, okay.
And that should be an easy way. I just need to know where that is where you're standing right there.
Right.
And then that will just.
I want to know the office. I know we have a big.
Uh can I can I ask, I think we asked this the last time, what is your timeline?
I mean.
I mean, I I can.
Assume it's Bob.
Well, 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 I I used to think that, but quite frankly, I mean, as as I go through this process, I'm like. You have a fifty million dollar project up there and everybody goes up and roar. And here I come up with something where I'm trying to come up with, I was running the numbers and it was like. A third of what a fifty million dollar project could have been, you know, and to see that. I don't know, a little bit disheartened frankly, so I mean, I I mean, it can wait, but I mean, I mean, it's. I- i- if it was important enough for people to be.
Right.
They would be here.
Yeah.
And and that's the part where I have a little bit of problem listening to people that. Don't, you know, just show up to I I don't know, I would just be fair. I mean, you know, if if you want to be able to have a say, you need to go. So I mean, to answer your question, I mean, I mean, I would have a choice, but.
Right. Right, and and tell me, did the did the town council? Um did they have any opinions about you from the bridge?
Well, I mean, I I just brought it up because you're going to see it. And and that's the whole point of why I'm trying to do it is because you can see the water. And you can see and it's hard to have a view and not see it from the other side. So, you know, they 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 were basically saying, well, A R B really didn't have a say in it. Well, they're first hand, that's not that it's where they.
Because. Right, you're gonna see it and all I wanted was this part.
What I think is most fair is you come up with some rationale. Um to be considered whether that's you know, it's something that everybody agrees.
No.
To or they don't.
Right.
And and quite frankly, that's okay.
Right.
But you know, it's not trying to be in off guard, it's kind of what I would do if I get that, I would. I would say back at that, you know, A R B really does what I'm like, yeah. That's what I'm trying to, you know, it's what they say, I mean, I would want to be, you know, your job. I I don't think it's fair to think that somebody's not gonna see.
Right.
That's the whole point of my on here, not that I would, but that's the whole everybody that I've taken up there the last. For the last four times, you know, like this is a perfect. This need to be, this need to be, people that don't have anything, so like, God, this is an, this is an ideal, we got a really nice view. And I don't think anyone could help the town with revenue. And if not, people selling it, the town is, they're money. But I'm not really happy. I don't know, it's not, it's not, it's, yeah, it's not, I mean, you know, there's G I S, I I don't know. I I'm just trying to, I mean, you know, it is, I.
You know, based on our last meeting, I I think um. But you know, obviously, we weren't able to vote, but I do think that the majority. Um. Felt the design. Were.
Ten second view is kind of the.
Were not being appropriate for the town, so I think that the. I think, you know, and and the the recommendations I came up there or I brought to the table were. You know, not seeing the wheels.
You know, finish.
And and I'm in the works, and those are two things that I mean, we definitely don't see the wheels. From the street. And the porch might be from a distance, but you know.
Yeah, my fault is someone. But 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 not saying is you wouldn't come that far. More than ever. You see what I mean? And I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
That's from the same one, same as what I was gonna say, you know, I mean, I I think it's.
Yeah. Right.
I think that's. So the arts and whether, you know, I I think uh if there's. Been here for thirty years. You know, so that's like, hey, this is okay.
Yeah.
That hasn't been on the law since I got asked. This is what you know, since I got here is. Well, not, and I hope.
Yeah.
I just don't, yeah, I don't get to do that. Open it up and it's.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I just, I just. Just trying to protect you because I mean, I you know, I don't want you to make a decision where it's. You know.
Right, right.
Not something, the truth is, there's not that many spots that you're gonna have that enough view.
Right.
But maybe there are some, there are some.
Yeah, so what would the verdict?
So it is gonna be uh the view, the second thing that you can do is gonna be. Historic condition.
Okay.
Um now, the thing that you have to come back is the sheer difference that we are viewing from. Um are you able to so? It's, you know, it's not a terrible quality, I mean, so. You can only see it as you get to the stop sign or that's the speed sign. And then you see it up to where this house is, it's at the it. You that it'll covers the steel eye um so then.
Right.
Yeah, so you immediately available um. So being able to make out architectural, you know, details that that is. Um.
Well, we were just talking about that, we won't see, we won't see the wheels. Or we will see whether the screen pushing on. Um, okay, so I think the best way to move forward on this is um.
I I would recommend we. Tell the town council that A R B was unable to uh a. Well, we can't hear the follow your opinion um.
I think we need to have a special meeting.
Yeah.
Um do does the town council want a a report back from us before their next meeting? Is that?
Next meeting, work session is Monday.
Right.
Started to set out a agenda that can report back on, we do reports on committees. So at the beginning, we report on committees, we can, I can include a little bit of how. Today in our A R B um I can just, you can share an email or something, any details we want to pass along. Uh since I'll be in attendance, but I don't expect both of you to be in attendance or either of you would be extra.
So maybe the thing to do is have a special meeting next week. And then just have you. Have an email report to the town council that they are petitioned.
And that. Then that would give them time to put it on to a, no way could you prefer, well, now because you have to advertise her uh so. I well, you you would actually already advertise, do you know the stuff about details of the unit, do you?
No, because it already got advertised through planning commission for special use, already got advertised in town council. It was the A R B decision, a little bit. Not as sure.
Isn't usually you go through town council? No, no, at first and then comes A R B.
Yes.
That's typical.
Right.
But I think in this case. I'm not sure, Javier, they they were trying to at least get yours.
Yeah, it sounds like they're deferring to us based on whether we think it's historically or. Whether it's appropriate or not.
Yeah.
Um.
And it's it was gonna be first before you approve a special use permit, the approval from A R B. And that's why we had that special session previously.
Okay.
So fit within the timing of last month's regular session, then that didn't occur, so we anticipated using this. Regular session, so we could complete it in September during this month's regular session, which would be the eighteenth. And that is, because you guys made determinations of the uh. Any appeal process is kicked up to the town council. So my concern is, we had this as an agenda item, but we don't even have a body to make a decision.
Okay.
And I I'm super careful about anything around property rights. Uh.
I recommend we divide and conquer, be call instead of email. Uh our board members and ask if everyone is available next Thursday. And um if they are, if if we're honest, then we um. Then we, you know, we have a special meeting and then we get back to the town council with our. And then um.
Yes, I can do it.
Okay, yes, the the question is, can we, the three of us be here? And Kevin, if you would like to be here.
I mean, I I'm thinking it's just much everybody, I mean, I mean, that's that's the only impression I'm getting, maybe I can just pull it. And once, you mean, is that?
No, I think that this is our responsibility and and I think that, you know. Right, right.
I'll be honest with you, I mean, I I have little patience, I mean, I know you have, everybody has to do that.
I'd like to suggest, I I get it, Kevin. Uh just on Thursday, this just being the agenda item and then these items get tabled or.
That sounds good.
I don't feel any urgency on the rest of it.
Yeah.
Some of this reporting was, hey, uh I hadn't gotten information back until next month. Um and we can do a focus meeting on Thursday, but we could. If if I can get help from staff member uh from board members.
Okay.
With uh with communication on that, that would probably help.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and call Alex?
Uh yeah, he texted me some totally forgot.
And then.
And then um I will call Austin.
And then I can promise to uh follow up on an email your questions from me.
And I'll, you know, I'll also call John because I think just with the conversation would be helpful.
Yep.
Actually, will you call Austin out here and I will call John?
Uh and. I'll prepare an agenda for a special session uh next Thursday, the fourteenth. At seven.
Um yeah, it should be.
Okay. I don't say.
And uh will you send me John Rex's number?
Do it right now.
Okay. Um the next third thing.
Okay, in the start. I don't want to start smoking on Saturday. Okay. And um I mean, words get talked down. Or can I give a predetermined motion on my part?
You can just join in there, you can just say where you are meeting for. Uh because we have that ability with uh remote meetings.
Okay, great, great.
One plus of COVID.
I might do, might have to do that, but I'll let you know, sure. Okay, I I don't know anything.
Um, okay. Kevin, you're free to go if you if you don't want to stick around. Um would not, but thanks.
Well, I mean, this is what I talked about, maybe.
Yeah.
I wish people would understand that.
Yeah.
And then some of the follow up with like the, you know, the plant, it's people that came in and it's like it turned down. I mean, it was like no follower, no like hash out, no. No anything and they wanted to, they want to come and best money in the town.
Right.
So we so I will say this, it's not about the money.
Yeah.
It's not about, there's tons of money, billions of money out there, it's. The the just the concept of the town and that they want to blame it on. And the money is wrong, the wrong argument started.
Most of this business, I think it can wait and any questions you have, I can take.
Yeah, why don't we actually um talk about the tiger fuel?
Yes.
Um can you explain to me why Mr. Heisen sent that email?
Um I think he had concern about. The about any follow up on tiger fuel site, so I think he wanted some clarity on that. So I hopped on it to look back because this was about a year ago, so I didn't remember off the top of my head, I talked with. Josh a little bit about it too, uh for what I see is that about a. Year ago in May twenty twenty two, regular session.
Yeah.
Uh A R B had. A R B had, A R B had uh. Denied a sign permit for the tiger fuel site. Um it was a different design that was not within the dimensions, it was one side. Um they appealed it up to. Town council, town council rejected the appeal stating that um. That quoting the video I looked at yesterday, uh that they would like. To reject it and going back to A R B as a process, they discussed that uh looking through the ordinance. You could have two freestanding uh signs due to the property, the lot having two uh highways on it. Or two roads on it, two frontage is the correct term, uh I went back digging through. And speaking with the developer and found a sign permit with a zoning administrator approval. For the two frontages, um they provided a sign. That fits the dimensions based off of our general regulations on how to uh based on. Uh total area, space area, square area, um height. Uh you know, how many are allowed by frontage. Um and just dimension in general for freestanding in a commercial district. Uh so the design they gave us complied and then there was an approval by the zoning administrator. Um part of it was just clerical work digging this up uh before my time. But uh taking it, I haven't had enough time to. Look through everything and dot every eye, but the designs fit. There's an approval from a previous town administrator, uh it fits with our zoning ordinance in regards to it. Uh so. I feel right now and I'll take a look at one or two small questions that this might just be an administrative clarity. So staff just clarifying that there's an approved sign permit. And then the biggest thing I'm thinking is just what I always have to do is as a zoning administrator, uh make sure that it's complied. In the same way we do for our inventory, that I have to make sure that uh. Uh they keep following up with any requirements we have for the A R B and inventory over here.
I do remember this conversation and and asking them to go back to the drawing board. Then me back with the design and. From what I can remember, really, I was sort of shocked.
You shared this with.
Um.
Actually, passing about.
I sort of thought when you said you didn't prevent, I was like, that's funny.
Uh yeah.
Yeah, so I pulled through old sign listings and didn't find it there, so the only thing I can think of is that. Uh we got it filed with our tax map, which has uh we we keep our zone, our signs.
Okay.
And our general zoning separate, uh usually with clarity, but not in this case.
Yeah, well, and and so um. Can you explain to me why Mr. Heisen thought we? There was an oversight, did he have information?
I'm I'm gonna be honest, I'm not sure.
Okay, okay. Okay, so. In in that case, let's just, let's just. This is all based on fact, so it's been approved, it's an appropriate size, it's an appropriate design. And um. I think we can move forward with this and you can respond to it.
Yes.
And just say, you know. Apologies or, you know, however you want to phrase it, um you know, we found documentation and um. And, you know.
Yes, I think that's the easiest.
Yeah, absolutely, great, and then. Is there a requirement that we? Respond to Mr. Heisen or um?
I don't think so, I think.
Okay.
Think that's, honestly, I think that's the appropriate chain of command would be to directly email me. Then I talk with one of our awards.
Right.
And then uh just a little part back and forth.
And it does, I I will say, I would, I feel as though that's Alex's job.
Mm hmm.
If if there are concerns from the town council that he brings this to board, that the town council members do not. Um.
Indicate directly to.
Yeah.
Overstep towards the A R B.
Because I think that that could make an email. Uh, storm. Uh, un- unnecessary. Uh, so. Would it be your responsibility to remind? The town council about that, or is that our responsibility to?
Uh.
Explain it to Alex?
I can have discussion with town council.
Okay. Okay. Great, thank you.
A hundred percent agree and I would like to thank you for your guidance in that. Uh, I have certain feelings and they don't need to be public.
Share. Um, that's, that's why this is recorded, so that'd be.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is there? Anything, oh, the other thing I wanted to have a conversation about were the sidewalk streetlights?
Yes.
Can you tell us about what the verdict was with the Lumens and the Kelvins and?
So uh about six or nine months ago, Matt was in discussions with uh Appalachian Power. And they were replacing streetlights, they owned that top part of the streetlight. Uh, they had two types of streetlights, they had a very modern look and then this more historical or uh downtown appropriate look. Uh, they installed, they've wrapped up Valley and they installed one on uh East Bay. Uh, they've been doing them Thursdays here, but I think they've been skipping some because of the heat. Uh, so I had to follow up with them, what they have is their standard with lighting. Uh, I had one public member liking the warmer lighting for the historic district. But I've also had community members reject me specifically and say maybe more safe with the brighter lights.
Hmm.
Uh. I don't have, I haven't looked through zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
And I don't really have anything that fits. I leaned towards a little bit of the safety. Uh, rather than the warm lights, there are LED lights also, it's more energy efficient, but that isn't exactly the purview. Of uh ARB, that's more beyond the bookkeeping side. Uh, thankful we're saving a little bit of money.
Which ones left?
The new ones, cause they're elegant pieces.
Ah. So this is challenging because our job is to say whether or not something is. Historically appropriated. Not to say whether or not it adds to the safety of the town.
Yeah.
It is extremely bright.
Yeah.
Is it?
Well, yes, uh, it is.
You'll see.
It puncture you in the eyes, that's probably the best, it's such a. Mathic difference when you drive through the town at night time, um. Which, you know, to your point, is good, but. I I think you are up to, you are, we we have to look specifically at our.
It must be nice, a lot to speak about safety. I just don't think it's our job. Um, I do remember though, having a conversation. About. The, you know, here's where I think it becomes, we've become a little bit hypocritical. We expect. Specific Kelvins and Lumens, I think that we added to the guidelines.
Yes.
Of signs such as tiger fuels, such as BBNTs, such as truets, such as Valero. And now we may be overstepping. You know, our own guideline, the town may be overstepping the ARB's guidelines. And so, that's where I think. That that structure put in place needs to keep all of us, it it's set to keep all of us within those boundaries. Including the town itself. And so I do wonder, do we? Do we have, so light should be contained, it's not to build on it, Jason, alright, since we. But you know, the intention is that it's a street, light should be shielded or set. So they're speaking about new construction. Do we? Do we have those Lumens and those Kelvins listed?
I can say a little bit, however.
Because I, I do remember having a specific conversation with about the truist sign. Because, and then actually the Valero. After that. Would this be in the um? Not the guidelines, but the uh.
Zoning itself.
Yeah.
I'm looking at that.
Oh, okay. It is not in the guidelines.
But I absolutely agree with your point that if the town would like to enforce. Construction on others, that it needs to wholeheartedly. Apply five of standards, set the place on others. If not, we are a failure as a town. Now, now here's that.
Right here, folks.
Yeah, and. Yeah, it'd be very. Total conflictive.
Yeah. You know, I will say, Javier, if we don't have it in our zoning ordinance. One thing we may have done is look at another historic town zoning ordinance. And for those specific. Measurements of light.
Yeah, this is a unique situation, because. I think we, my assumption is looking through old emails. Before I started, we approved, cause we liked the design, the. Appalachian Power owns the light, the top of the poles, and we own the poles themselves. So like the light is them, so some of it is a back and forth between the town, ARB.
Yeah.
The town with Appalachian Power. Um. I didn't find any discussion about luminosity before and then um. As typical with some utility services. Uh, you sometimes know when they're down on the road rather than ahead some.
Right.
Uh.
But there was an option, the warmer versus.
There was no, it was just between aesthetics of the outside, so they had a very modern look. That in no way fit the downtown, and then this is the more historic one. Cause those top lights have, they don't make them anymore as of about seven or. A really long time ago, from the email, so that's the only option they have, they use those fixtures in historic. When the historic uh district of Lynchburg. So they've been using those around Virginia for historic districts, but that's different from.
The lights.
The light itself, how how bright it is.
And are they in charge of installing those lights or we?
They are, so they they uh, they went through town doing it by piece, uh piecemeal.
Are they in charge of? Purchasing the bulbs?
Yes, so that top part of the of the streetlight is theirs, the pole itself is ours.
Okay.
So then that would not be the town's.
Well, I think we could have anticipated some of this to not make it a enforcement issue rather than a planning issue. To be charitable.
Okay, so the the issue is not so much that the town has given an option, it's that it looks better with the older lights. And now it's very bright. Like, were we given an option?
We were given an option with how the outside looks.
Yeah.
Fixer itself, but there was no discussion about the brightness.
Oh.
Yeah, I looked through emails, I didn't see anything.
Got it.
And I don't think they even brought it up.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess that makes me. Um. I don't know if it feels better, but it makes me, it makes me feel like. We're not necessarily backtracking, but we're we're simply responding to. Things, the current situation.
Yeah, but I I'll also put it on agenda, cause I want to talk to you guys.
Yeah.
I found the guidelines going through, not exactly fit. Uh, the language there is more in your business, quite put a sign in front.
Right.
Uh, and then some of our language is more, you know, light you have on your property, you're building residential.
Right.
And I'm trying to see in our zoning, exactly how this.
Right.
But then I also, you gave me a good idea, reaching out to other municipalities with the storage zones and see how they address this.
Yeah. Um.
That might be the homework.
Can you look back at the truist DOA? And look at our meeting notes, because I do remember. A very specific conversation around Kelvins and Lumens. Um, so it might be, that might be for us.
And, yeah.
I could take that.
The dollar floor as well, um, would be another place to look for the exact language. Because we had the different parking lot, uh, lots. And then the shielding around them to focus the light down, um. Cause. Being honest with you, what I'm seeing, there was very limited to no mention of lighting.
Yeah.
In an appropriate section, so uh page. For the gate. Uh, um. Page thirty nine through uh. Forty one, uh basically goes over uh electrical interference, radioactivity, water pollution, air pollution. We don't have a light pollution section, so that would be something that. Uh. Uh, I know planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
Has a lot on their plate, but that might be something to initiate in the future, cause we have an attitude zoning, um. And. Uh, with Madam Chair's uh authority, uh we could have a joint meeting.
Mm-hmm.
To make part of an edition about what ARB could. Uh, instead of appropriate lighting.
Yeah, I'd I'd really like to have those measurements, because otherwise it's subjective.
Right.
You know?
It's very opinion based, and then my, you know, number, that's.
And that's concerning to me with a property owner.
Right.
Have something to clarify.
Right, and so having those, maybe the thing to do is look back at those minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, look at. Other towns' expectations for, I mean, I know that Charlottesville has those expectations because. We. For a design I was working on, we had to work within a certain amount of Lumens and Kelvins. Uh, and it had to be a warmer lighting. So maybe look at Charlottesville's guidelines, um. I would really appreciate having that, because then. The. It it no longer becomes subjective and it's easier for. Those within the historic district to know what are expectations.
For their comprehensive plan, when does that look to wrap itself up?
End of the year, so it's, it's one of those that we can include. Uh. What would be appropriate now is to make it like a priority in the language, because then you'd follow up with a zoning rewrite. So you want to get your zoning in line with your cop land.
Um. How would you feel about making about our ability of getting the language into the zoning?
Great.
For it.
Well, you know. I, I don't know that I feel a responsibility to get it within the zoning. But I do feel a responsibility to get it within the guidelines and then send it to. The planning commission or the, sorry, is it the plan, yeah, the plan. And say, we recommend, this is what we recommend. And we strongly recommend you all work on your own. Don't the zoning.
Um, do you mind if I volunteer for the third request you want?
Yeah. Would you, would you be willing to volunteer to, uh? Once, I don't know if, it it feels, it this may not be the chain of command, but. Javier, you could pull maybe um. Uh, Lynchburg and or Charlottesville's guidelines. You know, that's Josh, and you could write the guidelines?
No, no, I can.
Okay.
And I'll give a link in our planning fellow for the cop land a heads up.
Can you specify in terms of historic uh districts? And cause you know, obviously from Russian districts and those those will be a little different than. I imagine historic is gonna be the most accurate.
Yeah, let me dig, I I already did a project on one of these, personally, I must.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, and I'll bring it to us to. Thank for our guideline and then.
Great.
Everybody likes to read. I have no experience honestly with the measurements of the light.
Absolutely.
I'd like to see the little castle on that.
Yeah, I mean, really. You know, it's um. It feels very arbitrary when you're reading it, and so that's why I think it's really important to. Do it based off of other towns, because we don't necessarily not be. I mean, I have a little bit of education in it, but you know, electricians are the ones who have the most. And so um, so I feel like it's best to compare two towns such as Charlottesville and Lynchburg. To to see where they each stand, and I said, I think that could be stand in a similar ways.
Awesome.
Yeah, I like that approach. As a generalist, also I don't feel comfortable. Uh, it's not my expertise, it's.
Yeah.
A general approach in those things.
Do you want to just give a planning commission a heads up of what's to come in the next couple of months?
Yeah.
So we're not totally surprised to see you like, hey, let's talk.
Absolutely.
So I, uh, the other thing I recommend is just looking at this language. And um, following the language that exists. So it fits within the already existing language. While if you all can. Javier, you can send it to Josh, and Josh, if you can have either, you know, a a pretty complete draft. By next meeting, and I don't imagine it's more than a paragraph. Uh, you know, I think this should be extensive, I think it's really about just giving the facts.
Yeah.
Um, do you think that's feasible?
Yeah, I I think I can.
Okay. And then we can vote on it?
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll send it to the commission and, you know.
We'll go with them and kind of say, hey, this is kind of what we're. What we've researched, all the with all of the documentation that we pulled.
Great, great.
Awesome, cool, aren't you gonna talk me about missing my, uh, doing this anywhere?
Be back, comes back in.
What things of this? Is I have started with them, because it's always been. I think you might be, you know, a two percent of population, I might find so many more minutes in time. It makes my eyeballs hurt just to read them. Um, okay, great. Is there anything else? That we should be having a conversation about?
Um. Um, I don't know, what I'm thinking of, um. Just, I don't know, what was the, we'll get this to three thirty?
Uh, we talked, I wrote an email about uh. Farm set permits, the second floor on three thirty had a window crack.
It's also within the inventory that was done.
Yeah.
Or.
So that's why.
Oh, we, we uh. Chair and staff, Javier, discussed uh with the business owner, they came to comply. So we thanked them for their prompt response, we talked about it last, last month also. Sorry, Morales gave a recommendation on somebody to help out with the window. So that's why it became a business. Uh, Valero, they have put shielding, I talked to them today, drove by. Uh, so they were working on reducing that bleed from the uh canopy lights into uh East Main. Uh, beyond that, that. Uh, the one oh, one sixty eight Scottville Center, the tobacco shop, they had trouble with their uh. Designer, so they requested, I checked with them, they just want to put a marquee sign up there. Uh, uh, so they were gonna try for uh September. Uh uh so they were gonna try for uh September to get back. I talked to them. I've been talking to them on and off, uh trying to keep a good relationship with them uh. Beyond that, I shared uh. It's not really worth talking about the historic letters, you know, to overlay without having more of a body together to.
Yeah.
Want to address it.
I I do have a question about that. Am I mis- misremembering that like? Do you have anybody who's working with you?
Right now?
Yeah.
I don't have anybody at the moment. Probably ended Friday.
Oh my god.
So I'm ready to go. This is a very.
We have these brochures that show like this for overlay. We've never used them.
Yeah.
We did three iterations.
Yeah.
I I I kind of rather not nitpick the design of them and just send out which one. Does not have type those is most accurate, you know?
Yeah.
Uh because I, we did all this work and why would we not send it out?
Yeah.
And so. I think if you could find the most recent draft.
And just use that.
And. Well, is this something that we need to vote on for next, at next meeting or?
No, what I anticipated was you guys might want to do revisions. And then I was gonna uh request some volunteer help with it. From you guys, but if we're, if we just don't want to reinvent the wheel, we have those brochures I shared by email.
Yeah.
Uh. All I can think really is. In a month or two, we just discuss when we want to send those out. Because I think probably January or December is usually when we talk about redoing the inventory. And our, and our timing is, our timing is uh. It was following doing the inventory or during the inventory?
It was actually re-inventory.
Okay, so.
So it's supposed to be like November, December that it's sent out.
Yeah, part of this, so people know it will be coming by.
So then my thought is October, we could talk about anything instead of November, December. And then we hop at the beginning of the year into our inventory. Um, which I had thought about a form that might be helpful. I'd like to have more of a form here to gauge that's productive or not compared to the Excel.
So. Here's what I think. I think if you can find the most recent draft of those, whatever you want to. And send them to us ahead of time. And request that we review them before the meeting. Um.
And then we'll hear this all October and some of November.
Right.
Get them out in the.
Right.
Just remember we started.
Yeah. We do it and that's one of the moments, but I I don't know who started it at that time, but.
I just got her.
And start in November, we got the fires on October.
Yeah.
Because I mean, October, November will be decent weather.
But I, are we, are we allowed to change it? Um since it's been done every January since.
I don't think we have a.
Just a consistent annual page I have.
Very.
Hi dad.
Just a consistent annual would be the only way I think of.
I mean, uh a month earlier, one.
Yeah.
I think it's long since it's done.
Or in the spirit.
Yeah, we push it back too. Uh we we have to push it back. For your form also.
Right.
Um.
I do feel like this is something we should vote on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the, yeah, the shifting of, yes.
Yeah.
I think the brochure is so, that's.
Yeah.
That's not what I.
For sure, just feel like administrative. I was really just trying to see, do you like it? And then.
Are there new things?
Yeah, and then like, if you want something, you can help out with it. But if if we're feeling like we're gonna do it. With what we have, that's straightforward, that's what I can say.
Yes, we're killing what we've got. Yeah, especially because it's just the way we're elected. Um. Okay, anything else?
No. Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, I uh I'm I'm content. I'll uh. I'll wait for two guys on Charleston Lynchburg. Uh like where it's going and. Uh this part, like, I mean, I'll get a crack at.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Feel like we're the two percent of the way that I'm excited by.
I did, it was so, it was so fun doing like, you know, just as a sense of compassion of like, cool, now anybody who has an issue with their home. Or the store, the historic district first cost down down historic district. You can rebuild the same way it was. You don't have to worry of, oh, oh, your setbacks again, so you can't build that, I mean. It's. Just broken.
That's great, thanks, Josh. Great, well, I think we can um adjourn this meeting.
Something to.
Yes, it was a, it was a discussion as opposed to a uh having a forum.
You're gonna wrap off the video. It's very awkward. All right. Thank you both.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.